Okay, it's six o'clock. I will take roll call. Okay, this is the school board meeting for Wabash City Schools. It's Monday, May 1st, 2023. Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We always start by reading our school mission. Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career-ready for success in a global community. Welcome. We have no recognitions. Revisions. Approve revision K to L. Find it? Okay, approve the following employees for the 2023 Summer Food Service Program at their hourly, daily rate, subpay or stipend. Melanie Honeycat, forty hours. Wendy Sheridan, thirty-five hours. Janice Berry, thirty-five hours. Diana George, twenty hours. Shelly Ford, thirty-five hours. Macon Harrell, thirty-five hours. Brittany Judy, thirty-five hours. Tina King, thirty-five hours. Alina Perkins, thirty hours. Terry Smith, thirty hours. Linda Miracle, thirty hours. Also, accept the resignation of Floyd McWhort as WCS Athletic Director effective at the end of his contract on June 30, 2023. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda. Get minutes, claims. We have one item of donations, five hundred dollars from Gin and Law for the WHS Japan trip. And financials. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Matt, would you have anything for the financials?
Not this, it'll be next time.
Okay, all those in favor? We would like to thank Gin and Law for the donation to, for the high school Japanese trip. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, May 15th, 2023, at Wabash City Hall. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on an agenda item? Make time for you. What's your name?
Christina Sellers. I guess it's not, it's not an agenda item, I just have something to add.
Okay, that'll be at the end.
Okay. Sorry. I hope she told me and then I wasn't.
Okay, there's no old business, new business. Kathy Swan awards.
Hi, I'd like to welcome everybody to LA Tech Center and to our, I don't know, I have to say. I'd like to welcome everybody to LA Tech Center and to our board meeting here. This award is to honor a former Wabash High School teacher, who was a business teacher, Kathy Swan. She and her husband John, her son Jim, and a family friend Vanessa Herschel, were tragically lost in a plane crash in 2005. So, Wabash City Schools wanted to do something in honor of her, and that's what this award is for. Kathy was a true champion for students, especially students who had a positive attitude, worked hard, and were motivated to do their very best every day despite their adversities. This award is given annually to one child at each grade level, and it is given to students who embody Kathy's positive attitude and his strive to be their best every day. With that being said, our 2022-23 recipient for preschool is Aiden Taylor, and Mrs. Guttman is going to come up and talk about Aiden. Aiden, would you like to come up and say a word?
This is my daughter.
Yes, come down here.
This is Aiden, and I'm so excited to be able to talk with everybody this evening about why he gets this award, and why I chose this special award for my, for my Aiden Taylor. It's one of my favorite topics, is to talk about how outstanding and how cool my students are. However, one student stood out this year, and it was Aiden Taylor. He's overcome so many challenges and obstacles, today being no exception. The family has faced with many challenges, yet here they are, proud, standing beside each other, and cheering on Aiden. I was pondering, who would Kathy choose? She would choose Aiden Taylor. It wasn't all roses when we first started preschool. We didn't really come in with a smile or wanting to learn. He wasn't digging the curriculum. But let me tell you, as he was encouraged and found that he could, instead of couldn't, I no longer heard, "I can't, this is too hard, I'm hungry, I'm sleepy, I can't do it, this is G." What? But, we changed all that around, and he can do it. And he has done an amazing job, an absolutely amazing job. So now, when he walks in, he has a smile on his face. He cannot wait to tell you about his journey into school. Yeah. He can't, he can't wait. He's got, we have a new and confident student, standing right here, with a deep heart and concern for the needs of everyone. He's sensitive, he's silly, he's loud, he loves to have fun at school. He has a blast. And now, he is our resident hugger. And he hugs everyone in our classroom. And usually I have to say, "Please put her down." Because he knows how to hug, and hug real good. So, let me tell you, from printing his name, learning his letters and sounds, from understanding hard math concepts, wow, he can do it all. And he's become a wonderful student, and a more confident student, and lots of fun to be around, and a friend of our own. Kathy Swan would be very pleased. This is the kind of student she'd want to choose for the Kathy Swan Award. Let's break down Aiden's name. Let's start with the letter A. He's amazing. The letter I, he's insightful. He sees when a friend is hurt, if they need a hug, or if they need something, he's right there. D, D is for delightful. Guaranteed to make you laugh. E, enthusiastic. You're not going to have any more fun than this guy. Very enthusiastic. And N for nice to all. May I introduce you to the Kathy Swan 2022-23 recipient this year?
Congratulations, Aiden. For our 2022-23 recipient for kindergarten, we have Ryan Spears. And Mrs. Kiefer, you need to come up and talk about Ryan. Ryan, you can come up.
When Ryan entered my classroom back in August, he seemed to struggle. Morning did not come easy. Still learning how to write his name, what the letters were. He needed some extra time to color, complete his work. But that's on the good side of the list, too. So you can't hold that against him. Very, very neat. I worked extra with him during recess, and I sent some extra things home with Mom and Dad, and they worked hard at home, too. And he was able to become a secret agent and work with Mrs. Enyer. And things started really picking up for him. He picked out those sounds, he loved all the secret stories, and put them in his heart, put them in his mind. And then fast forward to March, he started writing really well. And their goal is to help to write like Mrs. Kiefer. And I even brought a sample, tall, small, all letters. This is Ryan now. He could not do anything at the beginning, and he has persevered, worked hard, and he just does a fantastic job. And he inspires the others, too. When it's during group time, he has his name right there, it's like, oh, look at Ryan, it's nice to meet him. He gets the extra smile, and then they scramble to try again, just like that, to get an extra smile. So I compliment him, and he has that sweet little grin that I just love. One day during math lesson, we were having to draw something that was way more than my book. So they had to draw it, and then they had to label it. And I walked around, and there's his picture, Gator bathtub, and he put the word bathtub. No help from anyone. We have all secrets, and we made that big compound where all my stuff, so that's just, it's wonderful. During reading groups, he is often the first person to say a word. Used to be he couldn't send anything up. He can, he can read so well now, he's moved up to a lot of the higher groups, and he helps others know what the words are by this time. And again, I look at him, and then he's got that sweet little grin, which is so quiet that he knows it all now. Kathy Swan, she is a quality person. I remember her, a good friend, teacher. And I think that Ryan has a lot of these qualities that she had. She, one of his trusts, you know, I can trust him to be one of my best learners. He makes good choices to listen to, and not for himself, but he wants others around him to do the same thing. He's never outspoken, never bothering anybody, always doing what he needs to be doing. Another quality is compassion. He cares about his work, as you can see. He wants it nice and neat, colors, he writes, everything, it's just so good now. And he inspires everybody else around him to get to that point, too. Stability is another good quality. He always gives his best efforts, not just when he wants to, but every single day, every group time, every whatever. He's always staying on task and working hard. And then hope, another quality I think Ryan has. I think he has big hopes for the future now. He loves to learn, and I know he does a lot of learning games at home with his family. I've seen the evidence. And his family, kudos to them, too, for helping him to get this far also. So the saying that teachers plant the seeds that grow the future, I think Ryan is one of those students that does that for us. He's got it, he's taken that seed, he's learning how to water it well, and he is going to grow up to be an awesome learner. So keep on learning, going again, Ryan, and congratulations.
The board will take a picture with, with Aiden and Ryan. Congratulations to Aiden and Ryan and their parents. You did a great job with the kids. If you were just here to see the Kathy Swan awards, you're welcome to leave, or you could stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. Next, we have the Wabash Middle School Student Council update.
Hello, my name is Amelia Fairchild, and my name is Colleen Piver. And today we will be discussing Wabash Middle Schools previous and upcoming annual spring activities. So students just finished I-Learn testing, they did a terrific job, and I hope everybody succeeded and thought they did well. Next, fifth grade, this upcoming Friday is going to Midtown. This is just where they learn basic business skills and how to run a town. So the eighth graders will be going to OJ to clean up the reenactment site on Thursday, so the students have it ready for when they reenact, have a reenactment. Next, eighth grade is going to Purdue. This will be the first public and state-funded university that eighth grade has gone to throughout their middle school career. And this is hopefully going to be a really fun and educational experience. So the book club members of session eight graders will be going to the Carnegie Library to listen to a local author about how she overcame her writer's block and how she has been getting better at writing. Next, OJ has invited some of our eighth graders to help with their Unified Track Meet. This Unified Track Meet is just for the special education and general education elementary kids that won't be able to participate in their, in the track team upcoming. So this is just for them to be able to experience what it feels like to be on track team. Fourth graders are coming to Wabash Middle School to tour and eat lunch with the seventh graders, who will be taking a round on the tours just so they can get ready to become middle schoolers. Next, Wabash Middle School Student Council is doing a food drive for fish to help them collect more food, to help warm people. And to kind of give our students a little extra push, we are making it like a little competition between all the grade level advisories to see who can get the most. So Teacher Appreciation Week is next week. We would just like to say thank you to all of our teachers. The office in the middle school is doing a drawing of names, teacher's names, to get money. And National Gender Honor Society is doing a snack cart, and Student Council is doing little hoodie bags for them. Next week, well, sorry, the week after next week. Fifth graders are going to Ki, no, sorry, that's next week. Sorry, next week. Sixth graders are going to Chicago, they're taking a charter bus to go see the National Science Institution, the Bean, and hopefully a lot more fun and educational experiences. The fifth graders are going to camp the 22nd, and they will be spending the night into the 23rd. They will be doing numerous camp activities, like archery, smores, and campfire songs. Finally, eighth grade graduation is the 25th, and we would just like to, this is just to congratulate the eighth graders for completing their middle school career and the end of their high school career. Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Item C, approved resolution, resolution authorizing Dr. Sibley to sign documents to sell Ivy Tech property. Discussion?
This is just something that we had to pass so that it authorizes a signer of the documents for when we sell it next week, while closing on Tuesday. And so this just makes Dr. Sibley able to sign it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item D, approved FMLA leave request for employee 1997 to begin April 10th, 2023, and be used intermittently through the end of the 2022 to 2023 school year. Discussion?
I recommend the board approve this intermittent FMLA request.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E, approve the following transfers of classified staff. One, Ashley Pelfree from part-time PE, part-time rise room aide to full-time rise room aide for no more than thirty hours per week effective May 2nd, 2023, for the remainder of the 22-23 school year. Two, Jacob Franz from ten hours per week to thirty hours per week for summer custodial work effective May 30th, 2023. Discussion?
Mrs. Pelfree has been in the rise room for part of the day. Our high school intern that had the CNA has moved, so they are really in need of assistance in that room. And Mrs. Pelfree was willing to move there for the entire day. So we appreciate her willingness to assist in this room. Mr. Franz is currently working after school and available to assist our custodians at the high school and middle school. And once school is out, he will move to thirty hours per week.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. F, accept the following resignations of certified staff. Michelle Rice as eighth grade math teacher at WMS effective at the end of the 22-23 school year. Discussion?
Mrs. Rice has accepted a position with another district, and we wish her the best of luck.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. G, accept the following resignations of classified staff. One, Crystal Holbert as WMS Reading Specialist effective May 3rd, 23. Discussion?
The position that Mrs. Holbert had at our middle school was only a part-time hourly position. She has accepted a full-time Special Ed position with another district, and we wish her good luck.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. H, approve hiring the following classified staff. Corinne Kugler as summer custodian help for thirty hours per week effective May 30th, 2023. Discussion?
Mrs. Kugler was a summer custodian for us last, last year. In the past, we've had as many as five to six summer student custodians. This year, we will only have two, and we want to thank Mrs. Kugler for her willingness to come back and help our custodian staff.
Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. I, approve the following as instructors for the behind-the-wheel training portion of Driver's Ed for the summer of 2023. Darren Porter, Randy LaPage, Miriam Mylum. Discussion?
These individuals will do the driving portion of our driver's training program, and I commend them on their bravery to train our future drivers.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. J, approve the following transfer request for the 23-24 school year. Tammy France from seventh grade writing and speech teacher to seventh grade English language, language arts teacher. Discussion?
Mrs. France will move into the language arts position that Jill Beal left at semester. We filled it the second semester by rearranging schedules, but for next year, Mrs. France will assume that position.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. K, approve the following employees for the 2023 Summer Food Service Program at their hourly or daily rate, subpay or stipend. I read them earlier, so I'm not going to read them again. Or the motion? Discussion?
We want to thank all of these individuals for their willingness to work our summer food service program. This program allows many of our students to access nutritious meals during the summer months, and their hard work is greatly appreciated.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. L, accept resignation of Floyd McWhort as WCS Athletic Director effective at the end of his contract on June 30, 2023. Discussion?
We want to start by congratulating Mr. McWhort on being named the next director of the Heartland Career Center. We know that he'll do amazing things there. Mr. McWork, McWhort, has worked for Wabash City Schools for seventeen years as a teacher, coach, and administrator. He will be greatly missed, and we miss, we wish him nothing but the best of luck next year. As far as filling the A-D position, our current financial situation has caused us to evaluate how we will proceed, and we do, we have come up with a plan. Mr. Stone and I have decided that the fiscally responsible decision is to rearrange our workloads. So in doing so, Mr. Stone will take on the role, or the recommendation we'll have for the board is that Mr. Stone will take on the role of the Athletic Director and continue to work at Central Office as the Chief Operations Officer, overseeing buildings and grounds, maintenance and custodial, transportation and cafeteria. I will continue as superintendent, focusing on curriculum as well as taking over the CFO duties, including budgeting and finances for the district. Doing this will equate to major cost savings, as neither Mr. Stone nor I will take a pay increase for taking on these extra duties. And we will bring that recommendation probably in our children, June board meeting, where we approve administrator contracts.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
Well, it's hard to believe that we are down to just eighteen days of school left. I know that from now until the end of the school year, it's a pullout sprint for our buildings. We have a ton of end-of-year events that I'm really looking forward to attending as many of them as I can. We want to wish good luck to the OJ Robotics team. They are in Dallas as we speak. I believe the world's competition begins tomorrow, so good luck to all of them. And lastly, I want to thank all the individuals that came to our special hearing to provide comments on our cost savings ideas. We will consider these as we proceed. The budget did pass last week, so that gives us some more information that we needed, kind of another piece of the puzzle. We will use that to help determine our final actions. We also received the tax caps numbers on Friday. We will see an even larger loss in our operations fund this year as compared to last year. And our goal is to be able to share our final plans at the next school board meeting, which we set May 15th, but I think it is going to be pushed back to May 22nd. So that's all I have.
Items from Chief Business Office.
The only thing I have is I just want to congratulate Coach McWhort and thank him. He did a great job for us as our head football coach. He did a great job for us as Athletic Director. I know he did a great job for Heartland. So thank him for everything he did for Wabash, and good luck to him in his next role.
Items from administrators.
We had eight Wabash High School students earn their CNA certifications in the testing today, so that's, that's really exciting. I think it's probably the most enviable department schools collectively. So if that's exciting. We also had four students receive their National Technical Honor Society induction. We can have to go with something like that. We're in award season now at Wabash High Schools. We have a lot of benefits and a lot of student recognition. So looking forward to that, leading up to our graduation.
Thank you. Items from business. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank these two awesome girls because they are amazing young ladies. They are the busiest people in the world, too. So for them to, to put aside some other things and come here and share the great things at the middle school is pretty awesome. Congratulations to both of them, as they are president and vice president. I think next year, they'll be freshmen class, so they'll continue that process. And a funny story, as we were preparing this today, which they were not happy about, but we did get it done. They might be bigger cleaners than I am, but they would say, "I don't know what happened," because we were at the peak of COVID hit period. So some of these events that they were kind of like, uh, him hanging around is because they didn't get to experience those. And I had kind of forgotten all about that until we went through it today. So wonderful young ladies, they'll be amazing at Wabash High School. But thank you, too, for taking your time and coming and sharing all the cool stuff that's going on. So we'll miss you.
Thank you. Items from visitors. Mrs. Sellers?
I can just stay in my seat right? So I just want to bring this to you, just ask for, for you a little bit of time to listen. So my name is Christina. I've been driving a bus here for about fifteen years. I was just in high school, I'm a good elementary school. And I want to jump right in and say that I know that this district is in debt. I know that making any type of effort's not going to be fun or comfortable. But I also want to remember that sometimes, I do not be nervous, but I mean it. That sometimes it's not just about the numbers, it's about the reality and the sustainability of the changes. The fact is that we have to make cuts, but we have to be able to survive as a school district after those cuts. So the reality that we have right now is that bus drivers make eighty-five fifty a day. is that bus drivers make $80 to $50 a day base pay with $40 extra per county. And at this point, every driver receives that extra county pay. On the new proposal that we were presented with, of course, the numbers look great. It's proposed that our base pay would raise to $96, and we would take, and we would lose the $40 county pay, with, of course, some adjustments thrown around. The truth is, the $96 only proposed to be raised so that it not stay comparable to county schools because their base pay is $96. Although we appreciate all of the drivers considering to raise our base pay, they also offer other perks with their pay. Like drivers are able to take their buses home. They have a director, which as a driver is a huge asset. Another big difference is that, that is that they work approximately two hours a day of driving that we work for. The reality that is, that each driver here will be losing $26.50 a day. That's someone who makes $17,300. He's going to take it approximately $5,000 cut. That's huge. That's not just tightening up a belt. That is a crippling loss, especially when you're already earning that low-income poverty level. Also, the tone that has been given to the drivers from our media supervisors, the ones proposing these ideas, at this point, is that we have been, they have been doing us a favor for a very long time, as if we haven't really earned our money. The truth is, there is a reason why bus driver pay has run up so much in the last 10 years, mainly because as the school has grown, not only have they doubled, but tripled our workload. We went from, when I started 15 years ago, about 35 to 45-minute routes, now to two hours, four hours a day. Now we drive double runs and we go to the county. Although that might not seem like a lot of hours, that's a whole lot of kids. So it wasn't like it was a handout. And with that being said, each time the school, over that time, has made a decision to change start times or release times, there's been no consideration for how many hours have lost wages some of the drivers have had to just accept. Because whether it be other drivers that work in the other building or the ones that have other jobs outside of Water City School. And now scheduling just won't work because, as I said, these jobs don't fare well with any other job. You can't work a customary first shift, second shift, or third shift job. And the wage is not high enough to live on by itself. And it is no secret, there has not only, there has not been any subs and also no one to train for these positions. We just show up every single day, early or late, and give not only our time and our skill, but our hearts to these kids. And I realize that the numbers look great to cut $600-plus thousand between August and December. But the truth or the reality is we already live in a community that's so low-income base that cutting that much all at once is just too much to sustain. Although the cuts need to be made, maybe not so much so fast. We didn't get into this debt in one year, and it will take a little time to get out of it. At this rate, we will lose drivers and dramatically affect so many families of our drivers. Drivers will be forced to quit. That is just not sustainable. Clearly, we're struggling as a whole where the numbers were enrollment are not. I said our community is still in low-income base. These parents will have to put their children on whatever bus comes to them, not only just in the county, but especially places like Meadowbrook or Southside. If we lose drivers at best, we'll have to cap the number of students we have the ability to bus. With the proposed changes, even if half of our drivers are able to stay, we won't be able to provide proper transportation, even if we wanted to at that point. And also, no secret that MST will bus them from anywhere in the city. I asked me to think about the reality of that. The truth is, of course, we understand that cutbacks have to be made, but maybe there are other options. Like I propose that we eliminate one driving position. That's an entire salary. And with the walking area that has been proposed between OJ and the middle school, I do believe that would be an easier transition. I also believe that we could consolidate some of the county parts of our routes, and maybe not every driver would receive that extra pay. With that, I also think that we still do need to raise our base pay to $96, but with that, maybe it would only pay $25 or $20 to go to the county instead of Florida. As a department, we have absorbed some of the changes, such as not replacing our director when she left. We have all, have already had drivers who have taken cuts in pay with shuttle runs and extra routes. They have lost a lot of pay with taking field and sports trips on the activity buses, and so they don't have to pay a driver. Also, as drivers with this proposal, we have been told that we won't know where or when, where we will be driving, or if they will even need us until August enrollment. This proposal just seems like transportation is very disposable. And we are asking the board to ask more questions and understand the reality of the situation, not just the numbers. The focus has really been on transportation department, but there is other relatively less intrusive ways to cut some costs, like maybe eliminating the admin building or more moving into the school since we'll be eliminating some teachers in fact. I think that lessening the blow a little and exploring other avenues of making more revenue would be a more sustainable way to get our district back to where it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Items from board members.
I just want to congratulate our Cathy Swan board members, Ada and Ryan. Ryan, I think you're getting dressed better than Ryan. And you also dress better than I do. Congratulations. And I also want to thank our middle school student council again for coming. I always appreciate it. That's a lot of activities and a lot of fun coming up.
Ryan, make sure you stick out for the meeting. It's tough on adults, so let's, good job, buddy. Congratulations. Also, thanks to the school buildings the last few weeks. We had our meetings there. Very gracious hosts, high school, middle school, OJ, and now Carpenter. So thank you so much for having us and taking care of things. It's nice to show up and have everything ready to go. It's awesome. Thank you so much. And like I said, Floyd, like we talked about Floyd, we're excited at Heartland to have him. Marcus done pretty quick as well, so it's going to be a quick turnover there. With John and Pete there, I think Floyd's going to have a team to transition. So good luck to you, too.
A couple of weeks ago, Deb Lane, who had worked in our cafeteria for 18 years, passed away. And I asked Melanie Honeycutt if there was anything she'd like me to say about Deb, and this is what she said. Deb Lane started working at WC Mills in August of 2002, where she was loved by the students as she ran the kitchen. When Mills closed, she spent a year or so at OJ Neighbors before transferring to the middle school. Deb was a team player and loved kids. She had to resign her position in 2020 because of health issues, but stayed close to many of her coworkers. Melanie believes the cafeteria has an angel watching over them now. And I just remember she always worked during the summer and just was a sweet lady. So when I saw her in the refrigerator, I was, aw. That made me sad. So I also want to congratulate the Cathy Swan winners and their parents. And that's all I have. So with that, I'll take a motion to close.
Motion.